So if everyone would please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
So.
So that's a very good way.
You can sit in the comfy chairs.
Sit in the comfy chairs.
We're cheers.
Not like it's crowded or anything.
Yeah, okay. Um, let's try to stay on point and uh first item is approval of the November fifteenth twenty twenty two regular meeting minutes. They were attached in the packet. May I have been motion uh to accept?
Absolutely.
Uh, second. Are there any comments, uh questions, corrections um? For your minds?
Um, it's easy typo, but it was not a a uh significant, so now I'll never find it, so don't worry.
Okay, well, if you think of it or find it, just give us a a hold and we will certainly make.
It was a grammatical typo that you wrote down that.
Feel free to sit at the table with us in the in the comfy chairs. Okay, uh seeing no other comments or questions, uh call the vote to approve the minutes. All in favor? Alright, okay, your names. Uh, I gave you a sheet. There are two tax refunds uh that Brandon gave me this afternoon. I have a motion to accept uh the tax refunds and approval to sign. Motion, right? Second, I said okay. Um, any comments or questions? There are only two of them, so. Uh, okay, uh call the vote. All in favor of currently but alright. Uh, we do not have any cemetery deeds for approval tonight, so we can skip over item four. Uh, item five, uh the uh Economic Development Committee. I guess Jamie Sterling has his job has taken on quite a different dynamic, so he's very, very busy. So he requested um a switch with uh Steve Winker. Steve Winker is currently an alternate. So I said, I just, if the board is okay with that, we will bring it forward for uh official approval at the Board of Selecting Meeting Minutes. What we're here to do, make the motion to switch Jamie to an alternate and Steve Winter to a permanent member of the Economic Development Committee. Do you have that motion? Okay, second. Any other comments or questions? Pretty straightforward move. All in favor? Uh, okay, perfect. Um, then are we still waiting on paperwork for Clifford Drive?
You are still waiting on paperwork.
Okay, so that will have to be tabled until we get all the final documents.
All of the paper. From where from? So uh the information we have from the developer is that we're waiting on paperwork from her attorney for the trade adjustments, the uh deeds conveying the title to the uh uh road to the town. So uh and the uh, I believe the Mylar that has to be recorded. So basically all the paper.
So basically.
Where is it located?
Off of Mesa Drive, you know, twenty and then Mesa and then Clifford's off of that.
Oh, okay. And 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 this is just to accept it as a town road and a developer built it, that's all?
Exactly. It was a subdivision and so I uh all the uh paperwork has to be reviewed by me and then I've uh presented to you at your meeting, hopefully next year. So the road's fine.
We're just waiting on the final paperwork at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so that basically is tabled. Uh, the welcome sign is tabled right now. I'm still trying to uh look for the contact information for the owner, so um to let him know as we spoke at the last meeting that according to the state's little blurb that they sent us, the sponsor would be responsible for the upkeep and that. I don't know if the sponsor would actually want to do that, so we want to reach out back to them.
Were we gonna talk to Alliance about partnering with them on that? Did we discuss that? I thought we did.
No, no.
That they might be interested.
You know, we can certainly think of um, but right now that obviously is tabled. Uh, Leslie, do you have any updates on the grants?
Uh, we had, we had our fir- first meeting. I had a second meeting. A ta- a proposal out for a second meeting. What we're looking to do is get a process nailed down for how we're going to look at these going forward from idea, conceptual idea through completion. But we want to make sure that we have all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted as far as what is the financial implication of accepting the grants? What are all the details of, you know, getting it? How can we actually implement it? Does it make sense? Would we be in compliance with statute? There's just so many things. There's so much that goes into grants. We don't want to lose out on an opportunity to get grant funding to do any project. We just want to make sure that we have a process in place so that all grant proposals are treated equally and fairly and that we know who is in charge of what with each step of the process. So we're.
Makes sense.
We're trying to get that procedure down because the reason for doing that is because some of the proposed, some of the grants listed on the agenda tonight, particular um the money coming from Cabrera's office. What we thought was the process for applying for it turned out to be something completely different. After they said, yeah, we'll give you the money, but then we did a lot of backtracking and we just want to streamline that process going forward. So that's the purpose of putting this group together.
Um, so at this point, the next meeting will be?
It is, I am proposing the fifteenth of December.
Okay.
And before that, um Jen and I will have had an opportunity to speak to uh to speak to the two individuals from Srog. And we have also um met with some, uh one of the executives at Srog as well. So we have some ideas and plus Don and I also met with a representative of Gordy from Gordian.
From where?
From Gordian. They're a grant management company. They're a project management company.
Oh, where are they at? Where they?
They're nationwide. I mean, they're headquarters, I believe, in Atlanta.
R D I A N.
Okay, not familiar, but it doesn't mean anything, so.
They're headquartered in Atlanta. They have a ranch and park. They're all they're all.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of local groups and, you know, it'd be nice if we use local because they know our our state government and all our idiosyncrasies.
So I mean, we're just.
Yeah, and the meeting with Srog is what, two days?
Hmm. Oh, we were not, I think it's Thursday morning. I think it's Thursday morning.
And um, you know, and you saw my email to you guys. Um Helen Rosenberg works for the City of New Haven. She's a grants person. She's been getting grants for them for years uh and manages economic development and EPA and stuff like that. Um, but they do not have a specific process either, lest she know it's kind of everybody fit for themselves.
I think if you have a process in place, it helps make the whole thing smoother.
Yeah.
Not flying blind with some of these grants.
There was, yeah, there was a state way that we had to keep things, okay? And it was just kind of common sense, though. You know, every fool did the same. You opened it up, kept your notes to one side. And you had, you know, when you were making payments and you were authorizing this, who your contact people were. And there was a way that you could pass it along to somebody else if you left the project. And if so, Dom picks up your file or your file, then you'll know what's going on. That's all. It's, you know, it's easy.
Okay. That's where we are. Yeah, and pretty much I think things are status quo with most of these grants right now.
Yes.
Um, we're.
Did you get more um requests for projects for ARPA? Because I did get some people reaching out to me.
I have nothing.
Anybody else, Dom?
No.
I sent one in yesterday.
Well, that was for the for the um.
She did ask, listed as ARPA ideas.
What do you mean?
In, yeah, I said if we could discuss that today, if there if there were some other.
Yeah, and I put it in the bulletin again for uh December request, and I have not received any new ones other than what you had sent and um Catherine of the ADA. Um, Stanford voters.
Which does, yeah, that that's.
That's an easy one.
So what I've heard from people, um Bob Harrison said, uh and and others, I think um others are on board to put trails, maps, and open space and stuff like that, G I S system on our website.
Jen was checking into that.
Yep.
Jen was looking into that, so, yeah.
And we can certainly do that for for some money. So and and other towns have done that. Um, I have a list of what other towns have done. Uh, a lot of I T work as well. It's not just things that you touch. The problem that I have getting my arms around ARPA is like generally speaking, when you deal with a grant, it's got to be kind of unified.
But also with ARPA, it can't be a recurring expense.
Right, right. But once it's in place, it's in place. The quote shouldn't be maintenance on it. The other side of the coin, economic development would be uh, we are missing all the businesses in town to be able to have a home for them there that you can point to them. So I know it can be done, but it's costly.
Jen has been looking into.
So that, so the same piece is going to be loaded up and paid for uh similarly, I think, that sort of thing. So um those are possibilities of things to be done. Uh, what was that one? Oh, yeah, and I guess I asked about um, but it's beyond the the grants, but Bruce, that's a different topic. Um, we're still.
That's the other, the one we're going to bring up under other, I believe, but yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
So right now, on grants, gonna meet with Srog. We're still working on a process. We have no money in the budget for a person at this time. Our sole purpose is to manage grants, is that right?
Correct.
And we have no money in the budget to hire someone.
Correct, right.
How do you amend the budget? Can you? Once it's fixed, can you?
Time meeting.
Can you use uh ARPA money to manage the grants itself?
No, no.
Can you use any any of this grant money pieces? I don't know.
Through architecture or engineering or most of these grants.
They, well.
It has to be ready to rock it. Some are ready, but then some already they wait two years, so.
Yeah, the steep, I I am, I'm sorry if I broke the record, but the steep grants used to be that they would suggest it like, oh, this year, everybody's gonna do economic development. Next year, everybody's gonna community, everybody's gonna do planning grants, you know. So I don't know if they allow that anymore, but you used to be able to do that because you had to have something acceptable. It just, yeah.
They don't allow any engineering or architectural work up front, which they should because you spend most money to apply for a grant, you don't get the grant, you just spend twenty grand without, you know.
It makes no sense.
Right, it is a little backwards.
Yeah, well, a lot of towns, they plan, they have a big plan. They plan a decade in advance. We're gonna do this to our downtown. We're gonna have sidewalks over here. We're gonna do this. We're gonna do that. We don't do that.
We don't have a downtown.
No. No, we don't have sidewalks. We don't have downtown. We don't have a lot of this stuff.
That also become a liability.
Some people like sidewalks.
Okay, um, any other uh under that piece?
Cabrera, so any more definition on that?
Um, do you have some follow up? Yeah, we have passed hurdle number one. And we met with uh Mr. Cabrera on Friday and we will get his staff involved in helping us to get beyond hurdle number two. Because he was, because we had been told that it's a reimbursement grant and he was not aware of that. He was completely surprised when we said that. Yes.
But, yeah.
That's not, that's not helpful.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's that's the other budgeting quagmire we will come into. A lot of these are reimbursement grants. So we have to front the money to do the work and then get reimbursed from the state off of the grant. And some reimbursement timeframe can be anywhere from fourteen days to fourteen weeks.
Who has those funds sitting around?
Exactly.
Exactly.
I mean, that's the whole point of applying for the grant is because you don't have the money to do the project. But but apparently they think of it as a reimbursement type of thing, forgetting that we didn't have the money in the first place. That's why we're applying for the grant. I'm telling you, it's backwards.
Hmm, yeah.
But.
And that's where you, if you had a general fund, you know, an undesigned fund balance, you would go to your town meeting and get permission to use your undesigned fund balance money to front.
Right.
And then you, you know, but you'd have to go to your town meeting to get permission to front the money. And that's how you would do it.
Well, that millions of dollars we just have lying around.
Right, but but correct, but not every town has that type of capital reserve in their designated fund balance. Except maybe Greenwich.
I said, where is it? You got any backpacks there?
Yeah. Yeah. Sitting on it. Okay, it does not lie with.
I just want to keep us sort of on on point tonight. Um, are we all good under grants at this point?
The DeLora thing is still expected.
We're we're like next week here. We're hoping to be here next week, but we won't get it until like the third, at the first quarter of twenty twenty three.
And we've been told we can only use it for one.
One project, only public safety.
And they and they.
We can't build our galleries. We can't build senior centers. We can't do anything. It has to be strictly public safety. We're in a heck of a public safety building, aren't we now?
That's, I know, I I know. It seems like we could put an addition on and make it all sorts of things.
Public safety, so. Hmm, originally, we would be applied for the gym and that. They'd shit to the just down the hill, so.
Yeah.
We could have put a bus that are used to the money.
For appearance sake.
Yes.
I.
Yeah, we were kind of surprised when they said, oh, no, it's only one address per there. Like, that wasn't what we applied for, but.
I'm not surprised, but it's disappointing, but I'm not.
We were, we were surprised, so. But anyway, um, okay, Simpson proper, we we just uh anticipate the closing the end of next month, so.
We're scheduled, right now we have a tentative closing date of January twenty fifth.
Really? So, yeah.
Couple of years of culmination is very nice. We at least have, we have a target date.
It was, it was quite the.
Well, we have a deep, a deep targeted deep funding date. But that's what it, we're calling. The money's still there, still. It's, it's, everything, everything is still there, but it's a deep funding date.
Remember this.
Subject to deep.
Yeah, we started to follow through on this. There was all kinds of probate issues.
Right.
Then COVID hit and courts closed down, so it was a two-year process to to get this to a four-year, sorry. Well, only while I, since I've been in office.
Everything froze.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it's still there and it's, it's, we've heard from Deep that uh it's targeted uh to to fund at the end of January.
So then we should hopefully be able to bring closure to that piece.
And right now, what we're doing is going back and forth between Deep and the Autobahn to reconcile their restrictions on uh their covenants. Because they have to agree on what they will allow their deed restrictions to be. On what the they will allow the birds and the bees to do on the land.
We're a month, month and a half. There we go. We'll, we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed, so. Okay, uh, last item is other business, which you had sent an email yesterday uh with regard to town trash and recycling.
Right, so.
I mean, we are going into budget season, so this is clearly going to be a conversation at this point in time. I think we need a strong assessment, which we're going to do, um of what we are doing. You know, what is the state mandating? Um, what are our options?
Um, what's the contract of?
I was gonna say.
Okay, not until. Only our, our contract with R W S.
Year.
June thirty twenty twenty four. That is correct. So we have another year and a half basically with that contract. And that contract binds us to have them picked up, pick up our solid waste only and deliver it to Wheel Obrader in Bridgeport.
The contract we have right now.
Yes, the contract we have right now.
Right, so your your best option at this point would be to go out for, when that contract is up, do an RFP to see if you can get a combined, right?
Whatever we do, yeah.
So uh, uh, that that's probably your your best option is to wait for the expiration of that contract. And what would you go ground for RFP about a uh six months?
January twenty twenty four. Four to six months in advance of the expiration of that.
Yes, it's not that far away. At least they have a way to just kind of.
Exactly, so, so timing wise, you're you're about a year away.
Yes.
From putting out an RFP.
Yeah.
And uh, then you would do a joint, you know, recycling or garbage.
Whatever we decide.
Exactly.
Are are we, are we gonna get the Bruce and those people back in the solid waste community to to lend their expertise? Again, to help.
Look at what the state potentially is mandating.
I I'm open to conversation with anyone on this topic. But I do have quite a bit of experience in this area. Um the town that I used to work for has a transfer station. And I was responsible for monitoring all of the tonnage of everything that went in and out of that facility for seven years. So I understand what can be recycled for profit and what has to be paid for for from a recycling standpoint.
Hmm.
So, no, I'm I'm open to speaking to anyone, but we are a little bit out from what we can do in RFP. But right now, what I, what I'm looking to do is just to, as Paula said, compile as much information as I can regarding our costs where we are right now and where we have, what last year has looked like, so that I can project that out to make sure that we properly budget for next year to cover all of our costs. And there are some ways which we can help subsidize, but right now we're not in a position to come up with those ideas because I have not had the time to dive into this. The good news is I have hired a second person for my staff.
She started questioning.
Good.
And I will be able to deploy resources in my office to pull past information that we have the historical knowledge that we can put all this together in an intelligent manner to move forward.
I still wouldn't want to ignore our expert citizens, so who've been working on this sort of thing and care about it. We we have to listen and have input to to move the process along. Because to me, this is an incredibly complicated and important topic. And we can't exclude anybody who's got a good idea of how to make us.
Reach out to Wesley and they can try to set up a time to meet with her.
More more, and and it, it's not just a solid waste issue. All over town, we got stuff we gotta look at, as you probably know. A lot of the solar stuff was purchased. I don't know why we're paying for that stuff and not getting it back, so.
But I I assume ultimately, when you're doing curbside, you're gonna have M S W pick up and then you're gonna do a single stream recycling at the curbside. That's that's.
Or not at all, you know, private pickup, all those things.
Right, well. You you may have a revolt if you do away with.
You may, well.
You may have a revolt if you do away with.
Oh, but the thing is, you have to consider every option there is.
Right.
And other channels have done, gone off the deep end as well. I mean, I don't know why, for the others.
Either the residents are paying private pay or they're paying through their taxes if we do resident, you know, townwide.
Because you don't have a transfer station.
Because we do not have a.
Do we have a fixed cost right now with that contract through June twenty? I mean, how does it work?
Well, we have, we have a fixed cost for R W S to pick up residential waste.
No matter how many barrels.
Correct.
People put out in the curb, they have to pick it up. Why do they shoot themselves in the foot that way? That seems like.
Well, no, 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 no. There's two, there's two portions. There's two portions to it. One is the contract to pick it up.
Yes.
That's a fixed flat rate for R W S to pick it up. But then we have to pay Wheel Obrader when it goes to Bridgeport. And that price changes every year. Right now, we are paying sixty eight dollars a ton for that to be disposed of.
So this will be, we've got ten tons, actually we've got twenty tons. It costs twice as much.
Right, but just the same.
So there's multiple pieces to.
Crazy that W S, uh W, R W R. R W S would agree to a contract, an opening contract like that, to have their guys go around with a manual truck, not even automated, and haul six barrels from a neighbor and one from another for the same cost.
Average of all. They're not losing money. They know what they're doing.
They did, they average.
There's, there's gotta be some.
It's it's based on their, it's based on the tonnage.
Tonnage and ton.
Yeah, so when they go to Wheel Obrader.
They just dump it at Wheel Obrader, then Wheel Obrader sends us an invoice once a month for the exact tonnage.
And but does it go back to R W S?
No, we pay, we pay Wheel Obrader.
We get billed from Wheel. So if they drop off a hundred ton, we pay for a hundred ton. If they drop off fifty ton, we pay for fifty.
We're paying R W S for just the service of picking up curbside M S W.
It's like they're getting, you know, that's an unusual situation, if you ask me. Open-ended, that they just go around and pick up anything that's at the curb.
Well, no, they've been instructed if there's anything recyclable that's left out, they are not to pick it up.
Yeah, but it's.
But to.
If it's in a brown, if it's probably unhealthy, though, if it's in a hefty bag, they're taking it.
Yeah, but six barrels versus one, I mean, and then no.
So long, they know that two thousand houses, they're gonna get three truckloads of garbage, four truck, whatever. Some days they might have half a truck, some days maybe a full truck.
And they, basically, it's one truck and they do a different section of town each day, a Monday through Thursday.
I watched them this morning. No, it's a very manual, old-fashioned operation. I'm surprised.
I've learned that garbage men don't know what they're doing. They 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 know what they're doing.
Yes, why? It looks like hard work.
But they know what they're doing and they tend not to lose money.
Yes.
They're not losing money.
None, that's me.
But, yeah, so we, like I say, it's budget season. We have to do an assessment um and really look at. And Eric and and Bruce can certainly reach out to talk to Leslie.
She is extremely knowledgeable about this.
I get that.
It's a little early in the game to start really getting too much into it because you're still.
I don't think so. I think, I think getting educated and pulling all the facts, I don't think it's too early at all. I think there's a lot of pressure for us to to uh move.
And one of the reasons that we had pulled out of that other grant was because the main reason we applied for it was because of the curbside recycling and they went and pulled it on us.
I know.
And that was the main focus of our reasoning to to apply for that grant.
It'd be nice to know in Connecticut, I know other towns and not all trash collectors work in every town. They're split things up nicely between them, we know. So it would be nice to know, you know, what everybody else is doing.
That's part of, that's part of our education process. We are in the process of reaching out to other towns to find out how they are doing it, what they are doing, what has worked for them, what hasn't worked for them, all part of the process. We're comparing, you know, who's 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 picking up, who's who has it as part of their taxes, who does not.
You know, now, I want to look at towns that are kind of comparable to Bethany.
Precisely, because towns that have a transfer station do not have to offer town-wide trash pickup or town-wide recycling.
I know.
Because they have a transfer station and you can take it there on your own, or you can pay someone to come and pick it up at your house.
Yep.
And then the only stuff that the town pays for through the tax base is what gets handled through the transfer station.
Hmm.
And everything else is handled on a, you know, personal basis. But there are a lot of factors with trash. It's, trash is a big business. It's a big.
Yeah, it seems like it, it's not too soon to understand the process and gather facts. Make a decision, maybe not, but yes, there, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and one of the things that we do here in Bethany is we offer free unlimited trash. And, you know, that's a huge hit to the budget. Um, you know, free at our houses, free at the at the recycle center through bulked waste. I mean, there's a lot of opportunities for for savings there, and that was part of the ARPA proposal is is was put in a scale there and we can measure what, you know, how much we ever dropping off. Um, but I think in order to sort of think through this, we have to rethink our entire plan. And generally, when people start thinking in terms of best practices, the first thing they do is not curbside recycling. The first thing they do is pay as a pro. You know, essentially charge people for how, you know, if you got six barrels, you pay more than if you got one barrel. And, you know, essentially what we. And, you know, essentially, what we would be doing in such a scenario would be transferring. The tossed trash, using it as a utility model from the town to the people who are using it.